Aloha. Mahalo for joining Kukoua Council's Honolulu Council District Five Candidates Forum. I am Lila Moore, President of the Kukoua Council and your host. Mahalo to my valued colleagues for the logistical support, especially Rick Tabor, Helen Wagner, Doug Matsuka, Lotus Schabert, and Barbara Service. The Kukoua Council is one of Hawaii's oldest advocacy organizations. We engage those who are interested in shaping the future and the well-being of our communities. As example, as an example, in early March, weeks before Governor Ege issued stay-at-home orders, the Kukoua Council had a press conference. We requested our local governments address the pandemic and reveal their plans for older adults. Lieutenant Governor Josh Green and many other advocates for seniors participated in that conference. In April, with worldwide news that residents of nursing homes and long-term care facilities were among the most susceptible to COVID-19, the Kukoua Council had a public conference with Hawaii's long-term care ombudsman, John McDermott. Ombudsmen from neighboring islands also joined in, and all voiced their concerns about the vulnerability of local care home residents and their caregivers. In May, the Kukoua Council held the first public Honolulu Mayor Forum via Zoom. Despite technical glitches, there were nearly 2,000 views of these mayor candidates via Facebook and YouTube. This month, we started holding public forums for all of Honolulu's council districts. We started with District One candidates, and last week, we had a forum for District Three candidates. Today, we'll learn about the candidates for District Five. District Five is probably Honolulu's most densely populated community, covering the area from Kamaki, Palolo Valley, St. Louis Heights, Manoa, Makali, Moiliili, Alamana, Kakakako, and Makiki. All candidates who filed candidacy as of June 12th were invited to participate. The order in which the candidates will speak was determined by their own application and filing dates. For most of you, this program will be in a watch-and-listen-only mode. Everyone will be muted, except the moderators. We're on the honor system here, and each candidate will unmute himself when it is his turn to speak. There'll be audible warnings, so let the speaker know that it is time to wrap up. In the first round, the warning will come at 30 seconds and at 15 seconds before the allotted time expires. With all other rounds, there will be only a 15-second warning. Then, although we do not want to be rude, but to be fair to all, when the allotted time expires, the candidate will be unmuted, and the next candidate will be encouraged to speak. So let's begin this forum with the first rotation. We'll hear from each candidate. In three minutes, please tell us who you are and what you think you should do for District Five at the City Council. Dave Watase, will you please start?
Aloha, Michael Cole. My name is Dave Watase. I'm running for City Council in District Five. I grew up in St. Louis Heights, in my parents' home. I currently live in this house. My children recently lived here and went to University of Hawaii. Palolo, St. Louis Heights, Kamaki, and Manoa were basically my stomping grounds growing up. I attended Hokolani Elementary School, Ari Deemer Lutheran School, and St. Louis High School. I went on to attend Kansas State University. I graduated with BS in Civil Engineering. And I've worked for my father's business, which specializes in affordable housing on Wailei Avenue in Kamaki. I'm retired. I'm a retired engineer, and I've never run for political office. I don't think I carry any political baggage in that sense, and I think I can be very unbiased and uninfluenced in many of my decisions. I got involved and decided to run for office because, over the past two years, I've attended seven neighborhood boards in District Five, and I was fighting the Alwai Canal project, a poorly designed project which impacted the community, especially the valley residents in Makiki, Palolo, and Manoa, including St. Louis Heights, because the Army Corps wanted to put a detention base in on County White Park affecting Hokolani School. In the course of that, and attending all the neighborhood board meetings, I found out that the government seems to be on the wild and crazy, and a lot of the things that have been going on really concerned me, and I felt motivated to get involved. In addition to that, I did stand up and work with many organizations like Save Alamana Park, Hui, Malama, Moana, Save Our Sherwoods, and many other organizations. I stood up for short-term, against short-term rentals, Bill 85 and 89, and also Monster Homes. So I've been active in the community. I've been listening. I feel I have a good sense and a good reason and judgment. I want to bring transparency and accountability back to the City Council and government. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Kelvin Seay?
Very much to all of you as part of Kukoua Council. And let me say this first. Thank you very much for putting on this forum. It is indeed a pleasure to be part of this forum whereby you're educating the general populace at large. My upbringing was that I was born in Palolo Valley. I'm very blessed to have gone to Palolo Elementary School, Jared Middle School, and just like Dave, on to St. Louis where I was reformed. Nah, only joke. But after the St. Louis High School, I did go to the University of Hawaii. I got my degree in teaching and my fifth-year certificate. And during the years from 1970 to 1990, I was, guess what, doing? I was a dishwasher-busboy at the old flamingo chuck wagon. But more importantly, why I'm running today is because I truly believe that City Council is where all the action is as far as pocketbook politics for our local residents. There's a lot of times when I hear and I get calls and emails in regards to the buttholes, the water line breaking, our sewer lines. What are you doing about our city and county parks? And why, how come the law enforcement isn't around to drive in Palolo Valley, St. Louis Heights, or Wulamino Rise? Only I'm really enjoying myself is that I enjoy public service. I'm just very proud to say to all of you that there's other topics or projects that I've been involved with, and one of them was a big issue down in Chinatown area known as Kukui Gardens. When that particular project came up as far as the expiration of its 30-year note with HUD, and it was going to go market, and through Senator Carl Rose and I, we introduced the bill to see if we could condemn that particular property in preserving it for working low-income families rather than having it be marketed. I'm happy that you folks have given me this opportunity because there are many other things that I've done in the district. The improvements of Palolo Housing, where I grew up with a lot of my classmates and friends from Palolo Elementary School and Jared Middle School, who have since gone on to be very successful citizens of the state. Other topics that I've addressed or projects was the water tank in the back of Laie Road. In the old days, it was basically surface water. And today, a lot of the families that are backing Laie Road have groundwater through the tank that was put in the back of the valley. And that's one of the small things that I've done. And then finally, I've enjoyed working with the Keke Okaaina of the valley kids from Palolo Elementary to Aliolani School to Hokolani School and other schools. But more importantly, we are here for the seniors that I've always supported also in regards to the Palolo Chinese Home, where they came in for granting aid in the redevelopment of that particular facility. So that's where my interest is at this point in time. Grassroots, getting to know the residents, and always responding to the residents and being accessible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelvin. This rotation is the first in a series of rotation. Each candidate, starting with Kelvin. Kelvin Seay has one minute to answer questions. This question is posed by Helen Wagner.
Okay. It appears a projected build-out in your area that would impact the holding capacity of your neighborhood. Where do you stand on housing density regulations in your area?
Firstly, I'm strong support of controlling the density of East Honolulu. And that's why with the plans that they had in the past with the state government in the growth of the west side, I thought selfishly, selfishly, we could control our density in East Honolulu and preserve our lifestyle, which is very pristine as far as single-family homes. I'm in awe right now because from Palolo Valley, St. Louis Heights, and Wulamino Rise, driving through Makali and Kakakaka, et cetera, I was just shocked with the density that is occurring in that particular area. But in all probability, we would have to have some legislation, land use ordinance or building codes to address the issue as far as if there is going to be increased density. But also remember too now, it has to be tied in with the present infrastructure.
Thank you, Kelvin. Dave, your turn, please.
Aloha. I'm in favor of increased density in the Makali-Moiliili area. A lot of those homes are dilapidated and old, you know, and it's a prime area for redevelopment for affordable rentals and affordable units for first-time homebuyers. Rather than we focus on areas like Alamana Shopping Center, Kakakako, buildings, condos that are basically, you know, have a view of the ocean, you know, and are luxury condominiums, and we try to force them to put affordable units in those buildings, to me, it doesn't make sense because that's the highest-priced real estate. We'll be better off going back a half a mile to King Street and focusing in Moiliili and Makali area and build higher density in that area. In fact, there are some projects already in the making that will do that. There's a project called Hale Makana Omoiliili. It's a project for 55 and older, 105 units behind Moiliili Library, and it's targeted for 30, 50, and 60% of the AMI. It's a perfect example of what we can do 100 times forward and meet the demand for elderly as well as for youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right. This rotation gives each candidate, starting with Dave Watase, one minute to answer Doug Matsuka. Doug?
Hi. Thanks for participating in this. I'm Doug Matsuka. I'm with Hawaii Meals on Wheels and also Hawaii Guerrilla Video Hui. This question comes in part from my own experience with homelessness in 2014. Now, given that 7,000 people became homeless on Oahu last year, what can you do to prevent people from becoming homeless? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Doug. That's a tough question because there's many reasons why people are homeless. And it could be worse now, since we have COVID. We'll have to see, you know, when the PPP runs out. And who knows? We may have a lot of people who are in the hotel industry, retail industry, that become unemployed and can't afford their rent. I think it's very, you know, there's a lot of things going on. It can be drugs. Some people have mental issues. But I really like the program by the HPD. It's called Honolulu Project. It's called Homeless Outreach and Navigation for Unsheltered Persons. They started in Waipahu. They recently completed it at the stadium park. And it basically does a radius, and they basically ask the homeless people if they need help and basically guide them to shelters and proper health. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Let me see who this person is. This might be Filmon. Hello?
District Five.
Hi. Who is this, please?
Hi, this is Filmon Lee, candidate for District Five.
All right, Filmon. Let me just change your name. Thank you for joining us. Can you put yourself on mute for a moment? Okay. So, so sorry to interrupt the candidates. Doug, can you do me a favor and re-ask the question so that Filmon can hear your question again?
Sure. I'm Doug Matsuka with Hawaii Meals on Wheels and also Hawaii Guerrilla Video Hui. Given that 7,000 people on Oahu became homeless last year, what can you do to prevent people from becoming homeless?
Thank you, Doug. So Kelvin, you're going to answer first, and again, you have one minute. And Filmon, you'll follow Kelvin. Thank you.
May I start, Lila?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Doug, that's an excellent question because two weeks ago, walking on Kamaki Avenue, I got to talk to some of the homeless who were there at the Kamaki Park by the basketball court. And it was fascinating to know how compassionate these homeless people are. This one woman that used to live on Kamaki Avenue lost their home when their family could not afford to pay their property. Others were dealing with drugs. Others were just hard luck as far as, you know, losing their jobs, et cetera. But more importantly, these people are very compassionate people also that we should have to hire as regards. Perception sometimes of what a homeless is is not always true to be. Not all of them are drug addicts. Not all of them are mentally ill. And not all of them are what the perception out there is. We also have some of our military retirees who have gone through detrauds and tribulations with PSD. And these are things that I would say, yeah, we have to understand why they are homeless. Can we get them out of that structure of being on the sidewalk, next to the parks, next to the comfort stations, et cetera, and finding places for them? One thought has always been, if we could once again start having our public housing, like Palolo Housing, KPT, Mayor Rides, and others. But the biggest issue for all of us too would be, we have to work collaboratively with the community in getting their support for a public housing in their particular district.
Thank you, Kelvin. Filmon, are you ready to answer? Filmon Lee? Filmon, are you there?
Yes, I'm ready. Yes, I'm ready.
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Filmon Lee, candidate for District Five. I think there needs to be a kind of overall restructuring of how the government treats all the public. For example, seniors particularly are on pensions and have limited income. But the price of inflation is going up, including property taxes and other types of taxes. I think that when you are young and making good money, you should pay more taxes. But when you are senior and you're on a fixed income, which many Speaker Ministers said are, we need to be able to have a fixed tax base. So I think there should be a tax exemption for seniors who are residents of Hawaii so that their property tax is fixed because their incomes are fixed. So they don't lose their home. They're not forced to move out of their house in order to pay the property tax. So I think that would help. Also, the tax structure on get tax and income tax, it has to have a more balancing effect where the...
Filmon, I'm sorry to interrupt, Filmon. You know, you came in after we did a couple of questions already. So I'm sorry. We're in a, we're doing a rotation of questions where each question, you have one minute to answer.
Okay, okay. I'll stop there.
Right. There's another question now, and this rotation gives each candidate, starting with Dave Watase, then followed by Filmon Lee, then followed by Kelvin Seay. One minute to answer Dale Head's question. Dale?
Hello there. Yeah, I'm a veteran Army veteran and retired federal worker as a pro harbor for about three decades. Simple question here, forward-looking. In three years, by the end of 2023, which Kupuna policies and programs will you have improved in the city and county of Honolulu? And how will you have improved those Kupuna policies and programs? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. My parents are actually both 88 years old. They fit that bill. My father, you know, just recently, a few weeks ago, almost got scammed out of $500. He went down to 7-Eleven and bought five, you know, gift cards. And we caught him before he actually gave out the serial numbers on the back. Being at some of the neighborhood boards, I've heard stories where caregivers had basically robbed a senior blind and then disappeared, and the neighbors are reporting it. There's a lot of abuse by seniors. I think they need help and guidance, including improvements with transportation. And maybe we have other options today with technology. You know, even kids nowadays, you know, they have options, whether it be Uber, Lyft, to get around. They don't necessarily have to buy and have a car. And even my parents, I realize they're driving, you know, they don't want to give up their car, and it's impossible. I mean, we're telling my father, you know, don't drive, you know, find alternate ways to get around. But he wants to be independent, and it's very difficult to get over that hump. I talked to all my friends. Some of them say, you know what, you gotta wait till they smash their car or something. But I see the need, and I'll do whatever I can to help our Kupuna. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Filmon, you're next. And Filmon, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hello. Could you repeat the question one more time? Hello?
Hi. Okay, I'll repeat it. In three years, by the end of 2023, which Kupuna policies and programs will you have improved in the city and county of Honolulu? And how will you have improved those policies and programs?
I see. Okay, well, you know, there are a lot of programs out there. And we have in-the-city Division for Elderly Affairs. And we have many, many of the programs there are very useful and helpful and worth the, worthwhile having for a good cause. So I do not myself foresee cutting back on the areas where elderly rely on because they are limited income, and they do need these services. And I think, one, is the senior housing program. Those should be, we should try to make sure or try to expand the senior housing program so those in need can get public housing or public subsidized housing. Second, the voucher, housing voucher program, it's often very cluttered, but that should still allow seniors to use the vouchers to pay for their subsidized rent. Also...
Thank you very much. Is that...
Go ahead. Time's up? Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Kelvin, your turn.
The policies of these seniors that we should be looking at? Continuation of maybe Tai Chi, Kung Fu, chess, Mahjong, et cetera, where they have the opportunity of mingling and working with other individuals who are seniors. Number two, the continuation of what Dale said, Meals on Wheels with Lana Keela Health Center. You have to have these meals for our seniors, which we're seeing right now in regards to pandemic COVID-19, that we should continue on with the Meals on Wheels program that a lot of seniors do need. And third, my thoughts was on the area of how we could get more outreach of our social workers in the community in addressing our seniors, in volunteering their time, in transporting seniors to a medical doctor, appointments, et cetera. These are three of the many that the city has been providing, but there are more that we could provide too. In the next two, three years, I'll be a senior. And what I would like to have is these type of services for the greater good. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelvin. All right. This rotation gives each candidate, starting with Filmon Lee, one minute to answer Barbara Service. Barbara?
Aloha. I'm Barbara Service. I'm a volunteer with AARP and Kukoua Council, of course. I would like to ask, what do you plan to do to bring the spending on the rail under control?
Oh, I, yes. Filmon Lee, District Five. I can know the rail is probably one of the largest expenditures of money that the county has, and also one of the worst, I guess, wastage of, with all the policy changes and everything. A lot of money is being basically mismanaged. So I think we have to have a major overhaul of the heart, the heart. And I think the institution of a PPP, a public-private partnership, would be more efficient in running the rail. Also, I would be in favor of revoking the laws that created the heart and bring it back into either a PPP or directly under the Department of Transportation Services, which is under the mayor at City Council. Because the, right now, the rail, the heart are not accountable to the taxpayers. They are appointed by the mayor. And so they don't have any accountability, so the costs are running away without any check. So if we bring it under something more responsible, we can control those costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Filmon. Kelvin Seay, you're next.
Barbara, how would I want to control the cost of rail? Simply put, right now, the state of Hawaii is already doing it with that Senate Bill One during the special session. If you recall, now, for the contractors to get paid, first and foremost, they would have to send their invoice to the Department of Accounting and General Services. They'll check the work orders and everything that was done in regards to that particular sector of the project. And then, third, you'd have to go to the Department of Budget and Finance to cut the check to the contractor. That's one approach. The other approach would be that we also do a forensic audit and see how monies are spent. I respect the officers of the authority, who are all volunteers, and they're trying their best to control the costs. The problem is that it's very difficult when they're a volunteer authority member. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kelvin. Dave Watase, you're next.
Aloha. I agree, a forensic audit needs to be done to point out the deficiencies and problems regarding accountability and being transparent. Part of the problem that I see, being in the housing management and development business, that's my background, and being an engineer, is that the project is kind of like undefined, and it changes by the day. And you can't come up with a fixed price, let alone a completion date, when it's a moving target. You know, we'll let the experts decide whether or not we can actually afford it. Right now, we won't get the anticipated GET, half percent, and the TET portion to fund the completion of the project. So it's to be determined what we do and how far we go with the rail. But I have serious concerns. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dave Watase. This rotation gives each candidate, starting with Kelvin Seay, one minute to answer. one minute to answer Lourdes Shibert's question. Lourdes?
Hi, I'm Lourdes Shibert and a volunteer director at Kukua Council. And I also serve as a director of my condominium association. We moved to Kakaako in 1997 for a project in energy efficiency and conservation for Schofield Barracks. In 1998, we were awarded Island Business Magazine's Small Company of the Year, along with the Federal Energy Award and publication in Energy User News. I have seen the infrastructure throughout Oahu and witnessed Kakaako's growth since 1997 with the buildings of new condominiums. My question for Calvin is, the current mayor focused upon infrastructure improvements. However, our roads, water, and sewer systems, public transportation, lack of curbs and sidewalks are still problematic. How will you solve this? Thank you.
That's an excellent question. How would I solve all of these concerns and problems? Very simply put, when we have the hearings on the, not the audit, but on the budget of the city and county of Honolulu, we'll go and really analyze each of those respective services that the city is providing. I agree with you in regards to the sewer system, because, yep, we had a major project in Palolo Valley, but people didn't realize. The other concern that I had was not the main line going through the road. It was the laterals that are connected to the homes where it goes into the main line as far as the sewer system. That particular issue I voiced with a lot of families, because in the end, if there is a breakage of that particular lateral, the homeowner will be held responsible. And that's where, if our seniors are on a fixed income, it becomes a major, major project of how to finance the replacement of that sewer line. Other topics that you said is absolutely true, that we have a lot of other services that we are supposed to be providing. And that's where I would ask you, can we press the button, a pause button, look at the total, total impact of what county government is all about, and from there determine if the resources or revenues are available for the expense side? I would say this, that I would support, first and foremost, our essential services, our police, fire, sewer, et cetera, in order to see that these services are provided with the revenues coming from our property tax. I for one, do not want to raise property taxes at this point in time.
Thank you, Calvin. Dave Watasi, the same question. You have one minute, please.
Yeah, aloha. I think everybody knows our roadways and the infrastructure are terrible, probably worse in the nation. I think every mayor that ran for office promised that they're going to fix the roads. It never happened. My main concern is really for the future of our children. When we look at how we're meeting all the infrastructure needs of the condominiums being built right now for power, water, and sewer, a lot of it is being met through our conservation. You know, as the local residents are conserving, we're going LED, we're using, conserving on water. And we're not really saving our aquifer, water, water supply is turning around and selling it to these condo developers. We need to actually save those resources for our children when we want to build affordable rentals for our elderly, as well as for our children. You know, it's going to come a time where we can't conserve anymore. You know, we can't use any more kilowatts less in our house. And they're going to tell us, well, if you want to build affordable units, we need to put another power plant or another sewer treatment plant. And that's the other thing. Our sewer treatment plant needs to do secondary treatment. And that's another big financial burden that our city is going to be facing relatively soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave Watasi. Philman, Philman Lee, you're next. Same question.
The city, right now, the city has, the biggest source is, of course, property taxes. And they also do other special assessments. In a place like we have a new development like Kakaako, there's a lot of developers going in there who are wanting to build and develop the place and make it better. And when they, of course, they make a lot of profits doing this. Normally, the city, you know, as for, to approve a development agreement, will request that the developers sign what they call is a unilateral agreement with the city. So they would have to be responsible for putting in certain infrastructure. Let's say if you had a new condominium, you're gonna be increasing the traffic to what was once a vacant place. So they're gonna require you to put in a traffic light or sidewalks and improvements around that district. So we should continue to use unilateral agreements with developers, which we are doing now, and also what they call special assessments. Special assessments are for maybe sewer or infrastructure that is necessary, but it is assessed to the people who are using it. Because every district, this district is a developing district. And they have had the same thing out in Eva where it's developing, where the contractors are contributing to impact fees, building impact fees. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Philman. All right, starting with Dave Watasi. Candidates, you have one minute to answer Kathy Wyatt's question.
Good afternoon, this is Kathy. I am on the board of Kukua Council. I am on the Policy Advisory Board for Elder Affairs. And I am the founder and president of Poly Holiday Hawaii Adult Daycare Center. My question to you is, how will you restore faith in the city prosecutor's office and the police department? And what do you think of defunding the police?
Well, I think that's become a very big, oh, yeah, I'm home. I think that's become a very hot topic right now. I'm really concerned about overfunding the police department. But I think there's always room for constant improvement, improvement and training. I don't think you can say that everything's good and everything's right. To me, that's turning a blind eye to the situation. I think the movement, which is primarily on the mainland, and our protest locally was very peaceful and effective. But I think we need to take note. I mean, I've never seen so many people locally join forces in a single protest. And I think it deserves the attention. And our government officials and all the elected officials have to take notice, including our police department. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. Philman, you're next.
I, I think, Philman Lee for District Five. For the prosecutor, I have some reservations about an elected prosecutor. I think the prosecutor should be qualified and have a background check before they eligible to run. But I don't think that the election is the best way, because it's hard to know the, you know, they have credentials, it's hard to know the character of the candidates. And that is probably better done by a panel like the mayor committee or the police commission to sort through the, or a commission to sort through the candidates. Because the only people, honest people, don't have any incentive to donate to prosecutors. The only ones that have incentive are organized crime and criminals. So the prosecutor should not be elected with, in this manner. It should be a more objective manner. And also the police, there should be a police standards board. There's one implemented, but they haven't really done much. I think they need to start rolling out the, and start enforcing this police standards board. And I'm also in favor of police licensing, where the police have a license, a registration license, just like teachers have a license. And that would help to increase the quality of police officers and also keep those that are bad actors out of the force. So I would, I would do police standard board and also police licensing to ensure the high quality of police. And maybe change the prosecutor from the election to appointed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Philman. Calvin Seay, you're next.
Thank you very much, Lila. And Kathy, thank you very much. If elected to the city council, one of my major roles and responsibilities will be to ask the hard questions when these individuals, the prosecutors and the police chief comes before the city council on their budget. At that point, that's where I would have the venue to vet these topics of issues that Kathy may have. What are the qualifications? But more importantly, what are you going to do about the performance of your particular office? Yes, I was very much impressed with the response from Chief Ballard in regards to what is happening today. And she is correct, as far as I am concerned. 99.9% of our officers are dedicated. Who put their lives on the line every day on behalf of the general public. When we need them, they're there. And, you know, for me, that's a sign that she has control over her department. Three months ago, everybody was in support of our police department after the incident that occurred at Diamond Head. Two of our, two of our deaths of our, you know, officers is uncalled for. But they put their lives on the line on behalf of protecting the general public. In regards to the prosecutor's office, I think they should go back to what Philman just stated for the record. They should be appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council, rather than having an elective. That's why, if you look at Hawaii today, do we do have elected judges like other states do? And that's where the problems of unethical, you know, illegal things may occur in order to fundraise for the race.
Thank you very much, Calvin. Then that's with Philman Lee. You have one minute to answer Rick Taber's question.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for joining us. This has been very good so far. So I'm actually, I originally came to Hawaii in 1976, was stationed at K Bay at Kani'oi Marine Corps Air Station as a Navy hospital corpsman. And I know St. Louis Heights in your district quite well. I graduated from Chaminade. I'm vice president of Kukua Council. And I have a second question later. I'll add more there. But in regards to the corpsman stuff, I'm very into the medical scene, if you will. So we will, current situation, we will likely have to learn to live with the coronavirus and other epidemics. If that's true, what is your strategic plan for District Five around that issue? And we're going to start with Philman.
Thank you very much for the question. This is a very big question. And we have to, of course, work with the federal government, the CDC, the Center for Disease Control, as well as our State Department of Health, because they're the ones that have the, you know, the research and the expertise in it. But the county also has to play its role at the local government. And so I think for government services, trying to, for example, limit as much as face-to-face contact as we can, we can try, we should try to farm out a lot of the business with the city for the protection of the staff, as well as protection of the public by doing it online. For example, you know, things like, we have customer service, D M D, renewing our licensing and permit or your car registration, et cetera, et cetera. We've moved some of it onto online already, like renewal licenses, et cetera. But some of this stuff are being neglected and they need to be picked up sooner or later. For example, learner's permit and new licenses, they don't have, they're not addressing those now because they have to build, we need to go ahead and build the proper infrastructure and so they can be done, you know, as much as possible online, where you're sending your application and your documents online, so they don't have to be handled by people. And so a lot of, I think it's a move to do automation and online to avoid as much contact as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Calvin, you're next.
Thank you, Rick, for that question. It's an excellent question. And these were just some of my thoughts, if elected to the city council. First and foremost, I would try to relax some of our business laws in regards to the land use ordinance so that our restaurants can survive. Opening up portions of the sidewalk and having their particular restaurants out in the open whereby social distancing may not be a major issue compared to being inside. Number two, we've got to figure out a way in getting more volunteers from our seniors in working with the K K O Kaina, providing childcare at our Department of Parks and Recreation facilities. Third, we've got to figure out a way to make it much, much more easier for our businesses to survive if people are going to get a job. It's very critical. If there is no job, then they become part of a ward of the state and the county. But more importantly, you know, I am concerned about what is happening with COVID-19. And I am really much concerned about where we are heading. So in essence, the three different topics that I just shared with you are ideas. If elected, that's what I would try to impose upon the council to consider, because jobs is a major part of the rejuvenation of our county of Oahu.
Thank you, Calvin. Dave Watasi, you're next.
Aloha. I think COVID-19 really exposed how vulnerable we are and how dependent we are on tourism. At the same time, if you look at our roadways, no traffic, you know? And a lot of people have learned how to work remotely, which reduced the traffic. Our schools basically is also, a lot of them have gone remote with online classes using, you know, various platforms. I think in the future, that's going to change how we do things and how we do business today. I think we could even, for University of Hawaii, build a lot more affordable student housing. I mean, 6,000 units or something. It's cheaper than pumping billions of dollars into a system that we are not sure if it's going to work, you know? So if we do that, we notice that when UH is not in session, there's also no traffic. So there's many things we can do, including remote, working remotely and bringing the job close, where people live closer to the jobs or schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, and then, let me see. This next rotation starts with Calvin Seay, and you have one minute to answer this question from Helen Wagner.
I'm Helen Wagner. And one of the things that I want to ask are, are you for or against the current Army Corps of Engineers plan for flood immigration into the Alalai watershed? If you are for it, please justify your answer, given the overwhelming public opposition to the plan. And if you're against it, what would you, what would be a reasonable alternative plan look like? Thank you.
Thank you very much for that question. Very simply put, I am in opposition if this project goes through in regards to the detention basins back in Makiki, Manoa, and Palolo Valley. I believe the candidate, Mr. Watasi, has done an excellent job in highlighting all of this particular topic as far as the project that the Corps has proposed. There may be other ways or other alternatives to address it. But in essence, if we could address those basins in the back of the valley and figure out the engineering problems that may occur at the Alalai Canal and stopping the flooding, I would be open to that. But at this point in time, I am against, I am against, once more, like I said, the basins in the back of the valley that would really hurt the residents back there. Thank you.
Thank you, Calvin. Dave Watasi, you're next.
Yeah, well, this project is what got me into activism. It got me going to the neighborhood boards and ultimately running for city council. Prior to this, you know, I really stayed away from politics as much as I could. But like I said, through my involvement, I've seen needs that go even beyond the Alalai Canal project. Of course, I'm against the project, the way it's designed with detention basins and the four-foot concrete wall around the Alalai Canal. I explored it. I looked at alternatives. And really, a floodgate flood pump, Almona Boulevard Bridge, and a network of pumping systems is really the way to go. However, the Army Corps, on their own, they're doing their own analysis. And they're going to come out, I think in July, with the engineering documentation report that's going to disclose their alternatives. We are, the city and council PIG is also working with Oceanit, and they've come up with their And they've come up with their own particular plan to solve the solution. So I think, uh, we're on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right. Philman, you're up next.
Hi, Philman Lee. Yes, um, I am in opposition to the, the plan that is initially proposed by the Army Corps of Engineers. I think it is a really kind of overkill and it kind of puts too much, um, burden on the upper valleys like Manoa and Palolo, uh, by, by having these massive, um, uh, retention, um, that could, could have damage if they're, you know, they break or something. Also, uh, I also am in opposition to, uh, a four-foot wall along the Alawai. And I think, I think though, in order to accelerate the, the flow of water to the ocean, we should also look into dredging the Alawai and maybe at the mouth of the Alawai to, to dredge it. So there is ample, uh, uh, water flow going out to the sea. And of course, um, of course, the pumping stations along the way will facilitate also the, the movement of water so that it doesn't coagulate or get too high. It can keep moving towards the ocean. So I think, um, I'm glad that the, 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 the city is reconsidering. Okay. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Very much. This rotation starts with Dave Watase. In one minute, please answer Barbara Services' question. Barbara?
Sorry, I got caught unaware there. Um, I don't even have it. Can you? What, what number are we? Lila?
Number nine.
I'm sorry. Um, what are your thoughts on the continued development of luxury housing in Kakaako? Start with Dave Watase, please.
You know, I, I think there's just too much luxury housing. Uh, I, I think our society is built around the, the path of least resistance and most profit. You know, and we need to be stricter in the sense of pushing for more affordable housing. And as I said earlier, I, I think if, you know, we shouldn't be trying to squeeze affordable units next to luxury condominiums. You know, I think we can set back, uh, you know, to in more, more Ilili and Makali uh, and do fantastic projects there. We don't necessarily have to go 400 feet. You know, we can go lower and wider and make it more, bigger and better uh, for our children as well as our kapuna. So, um, you know, my, my, my grandfather lived in elderly housing on Section Eight. Uh, our family business, we manage a, a bunch of elderly housing units on Section Eight. And it's a good program and, uh, we can build more of it and take advantage of the subsidy that the federal government provides to our state. So, um, to me, more, more the better. The demand is there and we need to satisfy it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Philman, you're next. Oh, can't hear you. Did we lose Philman?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Um, Calvin, can you go on, please?
Okay. I think what Barbara is saying, how can you figure out a way to control the increase in the number of million-dollar condominium units? That's a very tough question because of the scarcity of land here in East Honolulu proper. East Honolulu is one of the most prime properties compared to the other parts of Oahu. Wasn't there an article two, two months ago or a month and a half ago in regards to why people in Waipahu wants to move into East Honolulu? And it's because of the amenities that we have and the distance from all the, you know, amenities that they would like to share. A case in point, this only takes us from where we live, five to 10 minutes to Waikiki. It takes us to what? Almona Shopping Center? Ten minutes. All of this conveniency has contributed to the high cost of why the properties here in East Honolulu are so expensive. I was surprised for East Honolulu to have million-dollar homes. But more importantly, you know, these million-dollar homes are being sold because of the scarcity of real estate in East Honolulu where there is a pent-up demand. And that's where I'm a little concerned about what may be saying that we're going to try to maintain the presence of East Honolulu or Moilili Makali. But to go up in density loses the whole idea of what, where we came from also.
Thank you, Calvin. Thank you very much. All right. Now, this is going to be a long one. This rotation starts with Calvin again and brings us to Lourdes' question. Lourdes?
Hi. District Five has the most multifamily buildings in the state, including condominiums. While the state has oversight of condos, the city and county's Department of Planning and Permitting plays an important part because most condo owners complaints center around neglect or deferred maintenance of these buildings. Recently, because of the Marco Polo fire, the city became more involved with the maintenance of these multifamily structures. What are your thoughts on the development of an ombudsman office to assist condo owners with the Department of Planning and Permitting Services? Thank you.
I would be in strong support of it, Lourdes, because they become the advocate for the homeowners of the association. But you also have the association that determines the policies of that particular project. And this past year, it was really fascinating whereby they have legislation in regards to the association versus individual homeowners. Because sometimes that particular issue was in regards to bankruptcies and foreclosures of not being able to meet the demand of paying your CAN, which is your common area maintenance fee. But I would be in strong support of an ombudsman in looking out for the residents of the associations and the individual owners of the units.
All right. Thank you Calvin. Dave Watase, you're next.
Yeah, I'd also be in favor and for an ombudsman to oversee the condo and help the condo associations. I think a lot of it comes down to, um, the condo association documents, uh, their articles and bylaws. And, you know, how they're structured. You know, most of these units, uh, the ones that have problems like with, with the Marco Polo and the fire, were done at a time where the building codes allowed it. So to come in now and impose a new restriction uh, and fee or special assessment could negatively harm, uh, people on fixed income. So I, I, I think you kind of need to tread, you know, on the, on the water there because you don't want to harm people. Yet, uh, you know, when things are deficient and there's higher standards now, uh, we need to somehow migrate toward, uh, the, you know, the better, safer, um, systems. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. All right. Um, this rotation, we stay with you, Dave. And you have one minute to answer Kathy Wyatt's question. Kathy?
I'm coming. Sorry. I'm slow. It's me again. Um, there are very few centers for kapuna in District Five, especially adult daycare centers. What would you do to promote the development of centers for kapuna?
Well, thank you Kathy for the question. Uh, I'm slow too. I'm getting old. Uh, but, um, like I mentioned before, um, you know, the project in Moilili, uh, it's done by a nonprofit organization. Uh, basically, the land that they're using involves two or three parcels. Uh, you know, they, they basically bought those three parcels and they're putting a five-story building uh, with various amenities, uh, to service, uh, the seniors. And, um, you know, it's very affordable versus what we see going on in Kakaako where affordable is a hundred twenty percent of the AMI, you know, and, you know, that's rich to me. So, uh, we need things, except we just need them in greater number. And we need to find the developers that are willing to do it and tailor toward our elderly and to our, our, our children really, you know, and not just necessarily go where, where the biggest money is. And, um, I think we, if we need to provide those kinds of incentives, uh, you know, whatever ways the city council can do it, I, I'm all in favor of that and will push for those kinds of measures. Thank you.
All right. Calvin?
Kathy, that's an excellent question because as I step back and reflect, there is not, yeah, you're correct, not many adult daycare centers. That's number one. Number two, the cost of it for an individual is very high sometimes. And number three, as I step back and reflect, I would love to see where we may have, where we may have city properties where we could build an adult daycare center. Or after we build it, have a management operator from the churches who would be able to manage it and operate it. The idea would be very simply put, we put up the infrastructure, we get these nonprofits, churches to provide the services. Uh, I see a lot as far as what is going on because there's a lot of families out there who are having a difficult time deciding as far as taking care of mom or dad or going to work. And a lot of them would like to go to work, but the mom and dad may not have a center that would accept them because a great number have already applied and sometimes there are a waiting list. And that's the question I would ask my, if elected to the city council, looking for seating in county lands first and then working out a deal with a operator and manager.
Thank you Calvin. Uh, our, our next question starts with you again Calvin. And you have one minute to answer Doug Matsuoka.
Yes, Doug.
Hi, Doug here again. This, my question has to do with District Five landmark Thomas Square Park. Now Mayor Caldwell has tried transferring Thomas Square Park to the Department of Enterprise Services. The department that runs, uh, Blaisdell Center, the zoo, the golf courses and that sort of thing. Some want it kept as a public park within the Department of Parks and Recreation. Um, what, what do you think should be done?
Very simply put, preserve it as a passive recreational park where people can bring their dogs and animals, dogs per se and cats to walk, to exercise. We don't have to have so many different types of recreational, but more passive parks. And I enjoy having to walk around there. But, uh, if there is the expansion that the council will decide to do or the new mayor, let's have the discussion in regards to what are their visions for the park as far as having it being given to enterprise department. And let's have the discussion and vet it as quickly as possible to see what their vision is for the new Blaisdell, to the performing arts, to the arena, et cetera, even the parking adjacent to McKinley High School. But that park is beautiful. Don't get me wrong. And I really would like to see if we could just have it as a passive park. Thank you.
Thank you Calvin. Dave Watase?
Um, I agree with Calvin on this one and it should remain a passive park. I think it should remain under city control. Um, you know, I recently, recently went down there and the park is beautiful. And they recently improved it. And just the other day I went down there and there's a big construction fence around it. So I, I don't know, uh, we, again, we, I think we're doing a project that's unneeded. It, it was fine when I last saw it. And I don't know what the heck they're doing down there now, but, um, to me, it's probably wasteful spending. And, um, like I said, I, 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 I went there and it was beautiful. So I, I don't know what's going on. But, uh, yeah, I think the city should, uh, keep control of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, please stay with us. You start, um, this rotation in answer to Rick Taber's question. Rick?
Okay. So I have a kind of a neighborhood specific question here I'll ask. Um, what can you tell us about your knowledge of the Makiki Volunteer Library that actually closed a year and a half ago and how, um, how can you help Makiki, uh, obtain the Sustainable Community Library again? It was in existence for thirty years and folks aged out and the community would really like to get the library back. Are you guys familiar with that? And what can we do with that? So Calvin, you're up for that question.
Oh, no, it's, it's, uh,
I got it out of order.
That's all right. It's Dave.
Dave? Okay, Dave.
Uh, yeah, hi. Um, I, I, you know, I was at the Makiki Neighborhood Board meeting. Uh, I think this issue got brought up about two years ago. And I forget what the discussions were, but I, I think it was a matter of, uh, usage, um, you know, the cost, uh, you know, to, you know, to upkeep and keep it running. Uh, and, and the, the need for improvements in, in the area. So I think they were looking at alternate uses for that location, if I recall. But, um, I really think it comes down to the community. Uh, Neighborhood Board needs to take a position and, and vote if they want to support, uh, putting a library back. Um, and if the community wants it, um, you know, I'll push, if, you know, push for them to get it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. Calvin, you're up next.
Rick, my response, very simply put, is that I would go back to those particular board of directors to determine what had really transpired. I recall, yeah, it was a Makiki library, but it was a very small one. And if it's dealing with the state in regards to state librarian in regards to this library, we should get that person involved along with the elected officials at the state level, along with the council and also the mayor. Because if the community wants a library there, that could be funded, funded full-time with nonprofit, with a nonprofit organization running it, I think it's a win-win for all the community as a whole. But let's get all parties involved once more in talking about it, vetting it, and if it is financially feasible to do it. Because if it's not, I think both the state and the county will have a very difficult time in trying to promote the Makiki library.
All right. Thank you Calvin. Um, please remain with us and answer in one minute Dale Head's question. Dale?
Okay. Well, there, I'd like to mention that I spent about three decades at Pearl Harbor Neighborhood Shipyard as a mechanic. A decade of that as a union steward. Privatization. The Navy goal was to convert about half the jobs to private sector, which they did. That way they got rid of, uh, liability for workers and retirement. The question, recently, there has been a trend to privatize public services or create public-private partnerships. What are your criteria for considering privatization? Thank you.
Am I first, Lila?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Dale, thank you very much for that question in regards to privatization of public works, of public services. It's very difficult sometimes to determine if it is the right way to go in regards to privatizing a particular service. Uh, I can see some of the awards and benefits of privatization, but in the end, I always go back to this. Will that particular employee be hurt with privatization? That's the key. Being hurt financially, not having a retirement benefit package or even a medical package. That's the kind of discussion, if elected to the city council, I would be posing to this particular issue of privatization. Privatization doesn't work all the time for all businesses and in, even in state government. But our role in the county government is also to help employees get ahead in life to qualify for a small three-bedroom home, et cetera. But more importantly, having a healthy, well-rounded family that has the health coverage and the pension for his or her parent in order to succeed in the future. That's my thoughts as far as privatization.
All right. Thank you Calvin. Dave, what is your answer, please?
Well, I know right now, um, probably the biggest P3 that we're looking at is what heart is looking to do with the rail. heart is looking to do with the rail. So that in itself is probably the biggest, uh, public-private partnership. Uh, and, and who knows whether that's going to work out or not is to be determined. Um, I'm not against, uh, private-public partnerships, like Kelvin said. I do think we need to take, always take into consideration the impacted employees as well as the customers, you know, um, our residents who receive the services, you know, and, and the beneficiaries of, of those services. You know, if, if it's not done right, those people could be impacted with higher fees and costs, you know? But again, if it comes down to efficiencies and can do it for less, uh, you know, uh, a better job, cheaper and better, and we take everything into consideration and it's a good deal, then I'm all in favor for something like that. But I think we need to do it with reservations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. All right. Starting with you again, please answer Rick Tabor, who has today's final question. Rick?
Okay, so I'm also a licensed mental health clinician and I've been on emergency response teams for a very, very long time, well, most of my adult life, actually. So this question is specific to CERT. So, community emergency response teams, otherwise known as CERT programs, educate volunteers about disaster response. You're probably aware of this. Classes are around here in Hawaii are very poorly attended and very few communities have an organized team. As a council member, what could you do to better promote this valuable volunteer, uh, program? Um, it's, as you know, it's just a matter of time before the next emergency affects the islands.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm not really familiar with it, but, um, I think Manoa has something similar to that. Uh, but they're the only neighborhood board that I've gone to that has that in place. I think it comes down to finding volunteers and individuals, uh, you know, who want to lead it. And, um, that's not always an easy thing to do. But, um, you know, I think through the network of the neighborhood boards, many of them have 15 or more, uh, board members. Uh, if they outreach, uh, this, and, and seek out volunteers to take charge of, of the CERT program, programs, uh, then I think that might be a step in the right direction. But other than that, um, yeah, I don't know. But thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. Kelvin, your answer, please?
My answer would be that you have to do the outreach first into the community. As a elected city council person, I'll probably be the one that would probably notify families and residents in the district that we do represent, that from each of the different areas, let's talk about this particular community emergency response team. Because that's the only way we'll be able to educate them if a major catastrophe occurs, natural or man-made. And knowing that, if we have pockets of groups that are ready to help and facilitate and take charge of trying to provide these emergency medical services as far as, okay, this is the school we've got to go to, this has been designated, Palolo Elementary School. This is where we've got to find the individual that is in charge of the energy crisis that we have if one of our telephone poles are down. This is where we've got to go to find who is in charge of the border water supply because water is so critical. That's the kind of discussion we need to solicit from the general public at large, and it can be done. You'll have the police force there, you'll have the fire department there, and they will be part of the overall fabric of the community emergency response team also. Because educating the general public for Palolo Valley is one, St. Louis Heights is another one, Manoa, Moili Makali, as far as where do we go if the emergency occurs? And this group will be the one that has to bring everything together to make a determination. Once that is done, Rick, my thought would be very simply put, send out a flyer, put it on your icebox. If this natural disaster occurs, these are the individuals you can contact to find out what can be done to support your problem that you have in your home or in your condominium or your apartment. That's the approach I would take in trying to get the outreach out first, having them attend, having the effective parties make a presentation, this is where we'll be, da-da-da-da-da. And that's how I, I would like to do it.
Thank you very much, Kelvin. All right. Well, thank you, Kelvin and Dave. Um, each candidate will now provide a closing statement of up to two minutes, and we'll start with Kelvin.
It's been a privilege, you know, because I've been in office for so many years now that I've got to meet a lot of the old-time Board of Directors and friends, Larry Geller and others, and even Gary, I get to see Gary once in a while. But more importantly, this is what I have enjoyed, the democracy of the state of Hawaii and the democracy of America. Wherever you find Orientals running for public office that are given the opportunities which I have been given and blessed. But more importantly, it's the public service that we want to provide to the people that we represent. And that's where I've enjoyed my career, really, because yes, I may have attended just three neighborhood boards, the St. Louis Heights Diamond Head Kapahulu Neighborhood Board, the Palolo Neighborhood Board, and the Kamiki Neighborhood Board. I've enjoyed it in responding to the questions and concerns that they all have at the board meetings, taking it back, going and seeing the respective departments at the state or county level. And that's what public office is all about, helping people. Sometimes I get a little discouraged when, you know, one of our participants may say, "Yeah, this particular replacement of that pole that was hit by a car will take six to eight months to erect." But that person did share with the neighborhood board and the residents, "Did you know? I only have four teams of eight employees that cover the whole county of Oahu." And when that particular person said that, it reflects how difficult it is in providing services. Someday, if elected, I would love to see with David's support and others as far as, "Let's go fix our own potholes. Let's go fix our own signs. Do it yourself and find a way that we are not going to get sued and we're not attorneys." But these are the common sense approaches to addressing the residents' concerns. You know, sometimes it's so frustrating for me that you can't do this, you can't do this because of liability. Come on. We're here to help. We're here to help the people of the district that we come from. I enjoyed, you know, my service the past 40-plus years and I hope to continue on. And that's where I really wanted to share with all of you. Thank you very much for the privilege. Thank you very much for the opportunity and thank you for just being friends of one another. Thank you and aloha.
Thank you, Kelvin. Dave, your turn, please?
Well, I'd like to thank the Kukua Council for, for this great opportunity to let people know who I am and what I'm about. Regarding Kelvin, uh, you know, Kelvin, thank you so much for 40-year-plus years of great service. In 1977, I graduated from St. Louis High School. I made 18 on July 4th. I make 61 in a few days. And I decided, I saw this guy standing on the bottom of the hill waving, and I said, "Hey, he's a St. Louis grad. I'm going to go vote for him." And you were the first guy I ever voted for. So, um, thank you very much for your service. Uh, I'm running because I grew up in this area and, um, I, I found out there's just so many issues that bother me, and I want to be able to provide, be the check and balance in the city council so that, um, it's about making the right choices for the constituents in Palolo, St. Louis Heights, in District Five. You know, and, um, for me, I want to, I'll try my best, I'll give it my all, I'll study the issues, I'll look at things from different perspectives, you know, and pray that I make the right decision, uh, when, when I cast my vote on the city council. Uh, I'd like to thank all the viewers out there, uh, who, who listen to this, uh, forum, and, uh, I ask, humbly ask for your, your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dave. Candidates and Kukua Council friends, thank you for being with us today. As a reminder, this year we're all voting by mail. Traditional polling places will not be open. Remember to return a reply card to the office of the city clerk, and you should receive your primary election ballot on or about July 21st and must return it by August 8th. For more information, please go online to the City of, City and Counties Election Division. Also, please do not forget to complete your census forms. By completing your census form, it helps to bring needed federal funds to Hawaii for education, infrastructure, and healthcare. We hope that you'll join Kukua Council to visualize what is possible when we collaborate to improve policies, laws, and practices impacting our community. Next week, we'll fit, uh, we'll feature the council member candidates for District Seven, which includes Kalihii, Iwale, Kalikai, Matunapuna, Salt Lake, Aliamanu, Hickam, Foster Village, Fort Island, and Sand Island. In Malamapono, aloha. Thank you for joining us.
Aloha.
Thank you, Dave. I'll see you around, Dave.